All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock. So we'll go ahead and, excuse me, call the meeting to order. Sarah, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer.
Here.
Commissioner Wooten.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Pastor Clay, are you with us? There he is. Pastor Clay Olson from Chapel by the Sea will lead us in our opening prayer.
Do I need this?
Yes, sir, for the folks at home. That'd be great. There's an on/off switch on the bottom, and if you hold it up close, that'd be great. It's tiny.
Well, on behalf of Chapel family, we just want to, again, express our appreciation for all the ways that the town and those who serve Emerald Isle and every department who serve us so well. So we thank you for that. And we enjoyed the time that we had Thursday with many of you at the town appreciation luncheon. I think I was full till probably Saturday, but it was, it went so well. It was a great feast, it was a great fellowship. So again, God bless you for making our lives better in this remarkable town. And I like to call Emerald Isle a young town because it's about the same age as I am. It was incorporated in 1957. I was incorporated in 1953. Pretty close. But once again, we do appreciate you. And I have been known to be a rambling man, so I'm just going to say thanks and let's join together in prayer tonight. Our great God, we are so thankful for your grace and mercies that are new each morning. We're thankful that we can look to you for guidance in all areas of our lives, from our home life to church life to community life. And we know that since the earth is the Lord's and all it contains, that you are the owner of all. We are the stewards of all that you have provided. We realize that there is no difference between the sacred and the secular, only faithfulness or unfaithfulness in our stewardship to you. And so we pray for your special grace for those who serve our community so well. Guide them, Lord, we pray, in wisdom in their decision-making, protect them as they protect our families, and provide for their needs, we pray. For all these requests and for all of your sufficient grace and guidance, we thank you in our Savior Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Pastor Clay, thank you for being here, sir.
Absolutely. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave it on.
Yes, sir, that's fine. All right, if everyone will please stand and face our flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item number five on the agenda would be the adoption of our agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
To make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Sawyer has the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried. All right, item number six, we have an award presentation. I take it Chief Mathias is not back in the house with us yet. Do you need me? All right, we can do that.
Hello, ladies.
Hey, dear, how you doing?
Was that you?
You need me to hold anything?
Oh, I think we got it. All right, we have Dawn Walker and Tony Higgins here, two diehard supporters and contributors to Little Pink Houses of Hope. If you don't know what Little Pink Houses of Hope is, it's a nonprofit organization that provides cancer survivors and their families with, I was at a week-long visit to the beach every year, all expenses paid. In years past, all they had to do was pay for the travel to get here, but you guys have started covering that as well, haven't you? So they don't even have to worry about travel arrangements. And these men and women work tirelessly throughout the year. It's a year-long process just to make the week happen for these families. I've been fortunate enough to take a small part in it and watch it all happen and see everything that goes into, or see a small portion of what goes into making this relief and release possible for our cancer survivors and their families, from lining up rental houses, grocery shopping, lining up boat cruises, you name it. All these people have to do is make the time to get here, thanks to all the work, hard work, from Little Pink Houses of Hope. So I like Pastor Clay. I'm a rambling man. I could run out of breath and fall flat on this floor. I'm not going to do that. So I'd like to present to Dawn and Tony from the Emerald Isle Fire Department, Little Pink Houses of Hope, a check for $873.50. Thank you so much.
You're right next to the mic.
Sure, sure. I do want to thank you so much. Emerald Isle nice matters, and it really does. These breast, and it is breast cancer patients, and we have had men on this retreat as well. We have 22 retreats all over the country. I'll be going to Sedona in a couple of weeks for another retreat, but nothing, nothing is like the Emerald Isle Retreat, from the funds that you provide, to the gift cards, to the church meals, and to, I just keep, it goes on and on and on. But I do want to recognize Fishing for a Cure are very big supporters of Little Pink, so if you support them, you're supporting us. So thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, item number seven, we have another award presentation. For that, I'll call up our EI Fishing Tournament head, Commissioner Mark Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I could have my tournament volunteers come up, we have a dedicated committee that starts every year, and these guys work tirelessly.
Hey, Mark, let's get you a microphone, buddy. Yeah, just so everybody at home can hear us.
All right, how's that? All right, so if I could get my group to come up here, Mr. Ed, Mr. Jim, Mr. Greg, Mr. Ron, come on up here, fellas. And I think some of the people couldn't make it. They saw him's out traveling around fishing. They do a lot of fishing themselves and had other obligations. There's about seven or eight of us that do the scholarships. These guys right here, first off, huge thank you for what they do. It's amazing, the work they do, and all its volunteers and the hours they put into it, the miles they drive, the gas they spend on their old car. It's, when you have a tournament, you know, when I first got into this stuff six years ago, I thought, oh, what's a one-day tournament? We're going to kind of pop it in and get it done. But it takes all year to plan for one day, and a lot of meetings and a lot of things happen along the way, and a lot of things that just, it's hard to explain unless you've done it. And these guys right here, without them, there would be no Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament. So big hand of applause if you don't mind for what we do. Now, the cool thing about the tournament, this is our big day today because each year we try to raise enough funds to give out some scholarships, and we've been very, very pleased that, thanks to the support of the town, the support of the local businesses, we're able to have like a little auction the night before, then we have a really nice tournament. The tournament kind of pays for itself on Saturday, so the money that comes into the tournament for sponsor, or the winnings, we send it right back out. But the way we get the scholarship money is from the donations and the things we auction off the night before. And once again, these guys go out, they hunt for stuff, they find it, they bring it in, and then the crowd comes in and we have an auction, and it's a lot of fun. So if you've never gone to it, this year we're going to have it down at our gymnasium because we got kind of big last year. We had a little over 200 people that showed up, so we're running out of space at the Islanders, so now we're going to try the gym and see how that works for us. And maybe next year we'll get so big, we'll have to go outside. But we're going to keep growing, keep making it happen, and keep giving away these scholarships. This year, we were very happy that we're going to be able to continue with six scholarships at $3,000 each, and it is amazing of the local high school kids, and this group here has to go through, look at each one of them, find the six. We don't really do it on financial needs at all. We do it on what that student's done over the last years through high school, and they're graduating now, and the only requirement is they need to be somewhere in the Marine Field, and it has to be a local high school in Carteret County or Swansboro. And I think we've had winners at about, over the last six years, about every high school has pretty much had a winner one time or another through there, and this year we've got six great candidates. Mr. Ron right here, Dr. Ron, he is the head of the scholarship part of it, and I'm going to hand it over to him. He's going to talk a little bit more about it, explain to you how it all works out. But once again, I can't be proud as I am as these guys right here, and the support that we get from this commissioner and the mayor behind us and the town and what they do for us. It's quite a journey, but here you go, Mr. Ron, you take over.
Thank you, Mr. Mark. I'm Ron Dimmick, and I'm very pleased to tell you that in the five years that we've been doing the tournament, we will have given out $72,000 after tonight. We've had 24 winners, and they have gone to 14 different colleges from Florida to Massachusetts, and we've got six really outstanding winners in the audience tonight. I'm very happy to be able to encourage them to continue to do as well as they have and give them some means to help that happen. So I think we'll just do this in order of how my chief turns him around. I would like the student winners to come up and stay until all six of you are here so we can get a photograph or two. Would Natalia Melbard please come up from Croatan High School? Tyler Beidenbach from Croatan High School? Kate Guthrie from East Carteret High School? Sarah Salter from East Carteret High School? Emily Mills from East Carteret High School? Sarah Salter from East Carteret High School? Emily Mills from East Carteret High School? Emily Mills from East Carteret High School? Sarah Salter from East Carteret High School? Emily Mills from East Carteret High School? And Ansley Jones from West Carteret High School? Let's give these students a round of welcome.
And ladies and gentlemen, if there are any family members who'd like to come up, we'll do a big group picture with your children, and we'll get a nice shot of everybody up here. You're welcome to come up and be part of the picture, and we'll get a shot going of all of you. If y'all want to come around, however, Mark, however you want us to set up.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you also, as all of you know, that the tournaments are
the, every night for the commissioners' meeting, we put this on Facebook Live, and you can come back and watch it and tell your family and friends about it so they can see it.
These kids have done a really, really great job, and if they didn't have really, really great parents behind them, might not be the case. So hats off to all of you guys and girls. Thank you so much. Big turnout, good support for the families and those kids there, so that's really good. All right, we'll move on to item number eight now, which would be public comment. There was a sign-up sheet by the door as always. If you missed that sign-up sheet, no worries. Raise your hand when the last signed-up speaker is called. You have three minutes to approach the podium and speak. At the end of the three minutes, I'll just thank you for your comments. You don't have to stop mid-sentence, but please wrap up your thoughts so we can be respectful to the speaker behind you. With that being said, Sarah?
Joseph Westbrook.
Joseph Westbrook. Good evening, sir. Mr. Westbrook, yeah, I'm sorry, just so everyone at home can hear you. It should be on, but.
There we go. Yes, sir. Okay. I'm here again to talk about, unfortunately, the speed of traffic on Deerhorn Drive. This is my third episode here. I was here in October, here in March. The reason I chose today is I almost got hit last week walking because somebody turned off Coast Guard Road, paying no attention, came too fast, always trying to beat the cars coming down there. And as I iterate, the speed limits are too high. Even 25 on Deerhorn Drive is too fast if you see the number of people who walk down that road to the beach. They're carrying toddlers with them, baby carriages, strollers, animals, you name it, they're doing it. So what I want to do is, hey, you guys are doing a great job. I mean, I don't want to discount that at all. Traffic is increasing. We know that. It's going to get worse and worse and worse as the summer rolls around. With that's going to come cars, with that's going to come people who go faster and faster. While I was talking with my neighbor under the house, I bet you, I was there for an hour, I bet you 20-some cars came by, half of them were going very, very fast, and there was a lot of water standing on the road, which is another problem where we live, but it is what it is. I did have a petition signed. I gave it to Dudge Brownlow there. It is 10 households. I've got two more that are willing to sign, but they weren't available to get them signed. So I got a total of, I think, 12 or 13 signatures on one block to tell you that traffic's going too fast on that road. One of the items, and I sent this to Dudge as well in an email, there are what's called soft speed humps or tables that can be moved. I've talked with people last night at a dinner, and again today, and everybody said, yeah, sure, let's give it a try, anything. I don't know how it works. I've never really seen it before, but there is a video out there that'll do it. Short of that, I'd also like to say that I would like to see an all-stop on Ocean Drive, every intersection, whether it's a T or four-way, that everybody stop. Traffic just comes off of Coast Guard Road, it turns immediately on Deerhorn Drive, goes down the Beach Drive and then, or Ocean Drive, and then takes off and goes to the right. If people can learn, they've got speed bumps there, speed humps, and there's a stop sign everywhere going, maybe they'll stay up on Coast Guard Road and stop coming down the road. That should eliminate some of the traffic. Those are recommendations. Heard Dudge, I think so too. He said, let's get a grassroots roundtable, get your neighbors, let's set up an appointment, let's talk about it. Because everybody is agreeing with it, as long as they're not really impeding traffic, but slowing it down. That's exactly what everyone says, says, yes, traffic needs to slow down. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. All right, there were no more sign-ups at the desk there. Is there anyone that we missed by accident? All right, with that, we'll move on from public comment. Item number nine, we have a new employee we'd like to introduce, and this time I'd like to welcome, this is me. Go ahead. You don't talk enough. I talk too much.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to take this opportunity to not only welcome Jen Welborn to our staff and team, but we want to say thank you to Sarah Deal, who has provided us with an extended notice for leave. We're very thankful that she's been with us for quite a few years in our role as HR specialist as well as town clerk, and we would love to introduce tonight Ms. Jen Welborn, who will be coming on as HR specialist and town clerk in his training under Sarah, and will officially take over at or near the 1st of July. So Jen, would you like to say a few words tonight, or are you just going to smile and wave?
Way more articulate than what I had. Great job, great job.
Sarah, thank you so much for your staying so long and giving such a long notice and training, Jen.
Yeah, I want to definitely welcome Jen, and also thank you, Sarah, for everything you've done. Wish you all the best in the next chapter. All right, moving on to item number 10. I've got a couple of proclamations there. Do I have Raven? Are you here with me, Raven? Hey, Raven, come on. Tell you what, meet me right up by the podium there. Is that good? All right, that thing is still on. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce my newest friend, Raven Vaughn. She's here to accept our proclamation for Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. So June 4, 2000, well, actually, June 4, 2024, it's a little post-dated there. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is an inherited neurological disorder that is characterized by involuntary physical and vocal tics that occur many times a day, and Tourette Syndrome is often accompanied by other mental health disorders such as attention deficit and obsessive-compulsive disorder, learning disabilities, and anxiety. And Tourette Syndrome and tic disorders affect 1 in 50 children. More than 45,880 school-aged children in North Carolina alone are dealing with Tourette Syndrome, and although some of these cases are aided by medication, there is no standard treatment or no known cure for the disorder. Whereas there is an important need for more professional help with interest and expertise to identify, counsel, and treat people with Tourette Syndrome, a disorder that is often misdiagnosed and misunderstood. And whereas positive actions to assist children and families living with Tourette Syndrome would result from broadening of public and professional knowledge and acceptance of Tourette Syndrome, and whereas the Tourette Association of America is actively providing services to families, educating medical professionals and teachers, and supporting research to better understand the signs and treatments of TS. Now therefore be it resolved that June 4, 2024, will be recognized as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day in Emerald Isle, as a special day to promote understanding, compassion, and acceptance for all of our fellow citizens who deserve and need our support to break the stigma that surrounds Tourette Syndrome. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2024, Jason Holland, Mayor, Emerald Isle. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I have one more that I want to read aloud here. Chief Mathias, yeah, you're back in there. Hopefully, everything went well on your call, sir. I have a proclamation for National Beach Safety Week. Whereas the beautiful coastal and inland beaches of Emerald Isle represent a world-renowned recreational resource, whereas residents and visitors alike are drawn to those beaches by the millions each year for water and beach activities, whereas the aquatic environment has dangers, particularly rip currents, that can be effectively managed through public awareness and the vigilance of professional lifeguards, and whereas for reasons of public safety, an annual reminder of the joys and hazards associated with the aquatic environment are appropriate at the commencement of the busy summer beach season, whereas residents and visitors alike always must remember, swim near a lifeguard, learn to swim, learn rip current safety, never swim alone, designate a water watcher, alcohol and water don't mix, feet-first water entry, life jackets save lives, observe signs and flags, and beat the heat and block the sun. Now therefore I, Jason Holland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby proclaim May 20 through 27, 2024, as National Beach Safety Week in Emerald Isle, and urge all residents using our beaches to enjoy themselves at the beach this year while taking appropriate measures to protect themselves and their children. Proclaim this 14th day of May 2024, Jason Holland, Mayor. And we will, with that, move forward to, excuse me, item number 11. We have public announcements ready.
Now it is time for the Town of Emerald Isle Public Announcements. On May 18 from 9 to 11 a.m., come out for a pancake breakfast and help support the Emerald Isle Neighborhood Watch Program. Drive-through and take-out available, happening at the Emerald Isle Police Department. The next planning board meeting is on May 20 from 6 to 7 p.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room. Then, on May 21, the next police educating the public event takes place from 10 to 11 a.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room. The Golf Card Advisory Committee will meet on May 21 from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room. The next Coffee with a Cop happens on May 23 from 9 to 10 a.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room. Memorial Day will be observed. On May 27, the administrative offices and community center will be closed on that day. The 2024 Youth Fishing Derby happens on Saturday, June 1 from 9 to 11 a.m. This is free and open to all kids 5 to 12 years of age. Bait will be provided while supplies last. Rods and reels will not be provided. To register, visit the Town of Emerald Isle's website. The next Neighborhood Watch meeting happens on June 4 at 4 p.m. National Police Week is observed from May 10 to May 16. National Safe Boating Week is from May 18 to 24, and Beach Safety Week starts on May 20 and ends May 27. The next Board of Commissioners meeting is on June 11 from 6 to 7:30 p.m. in the Town Board Meeting Room.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Cruz. Item number 12 would be the adoption of our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
They moved.
Commissioner Sanderson, with that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried. Item 13 would be a discussion regarding the Stormwater Committee applicant process. Mr. Seberg, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So this board has voted unanimously to establish a Stormwater Review Committee with the parameters, you're going to have a five-member committee, and then, of course, planning staff will support the effort. But one thing we, and the committee shall have 12 months to review everything and give decisions or recommendations to both the planning board and this board for their consideration. One thing that we do need to establish though is how you guys want to make those appointments to serve on that committee. That was not covered previously. We can do an open application period, or if you guys have already talked to folks that you would like to see on that committee, that's one of the items that we need to just kind of get settled. I did have the planning board make a recommendation for who would be representing them. They chose Ethan Parker by unanimous vote, but beyond that, just instructions on how you wish us to move forward with getting everything established for this committee. That's all I have right now of answering any questions if there are any.
All right, we'll open it up to the board for questions for Mr. Seberg and/or discussion.
I'll start. I thought we were going to have Roy represent this board, or is that, that would work, right? He's got, he's got all the great ideas about, and again, I think the charter was to try to simplify the rules that are, that are in place, not necessarily break new ground, but to simplify things and get them as enforceable as possible and easy to understand for folks that have to live with it. I think the other criteria that came to my mind was having folks from each of the three segments, east, west, and middle. Beyond that, I hadn't thought a lot about the selection process. I figured maybe an application process like what we do for other committees with preference for folks that know about stormwater or engineering or... for folks that know about stormwater or engineering or hydrodynamics or whatever the criteria are that would make them well-suited to help us simplify it, maybe an English major in there to kind of keep it in simple English, but those were my thoughts.
I was under the understanding that Commissioner Brownlow would also be the board's representative, and I agree with you, Jay. I would like to open up the application process to the three zones that Commissioner Wooton has described and set that application process open to any individual with that discretion being brought back to us at our June meeting.
Yeah, and I can admit that I'm very happy to hear that the planning board voted unanimously on their candidates. I think that's a great start to move forward with that, the way that was handled. And I agree with Commissioner Brownlow who's heading up that for us as far as our board's concerned. That's my support.
Anything to answer?
So we need to make a motion on that?
We need a motion too.
Can we get some clarification first? Is that okay?
Yeah, sure.
So what we would like to have clarified is when would you like the application process to close so that we would have enough time to give you all the applicants that you can review before the June meeting? So if you look at your calendars and figure out a date you'd like it to close? And then secondarily, you have three available positions. What we've heard clearly is someone potentially from the western end of the island, center of the island, and the eastern end. Is that what you're looking for? And then what we'd like to clarify is, obviously, does that require then that person to be a resident of Emerald Isle and/or property owner? So if you want to clarify the ruling so that we can bring you the appropriate applicants, that would be very helpful.
I make a motion that we open the application process immediately with a closing date of May the 28th, which is two weeks from today, and that a residency, a full-time residency not be required, but a taxpayer status be required, and that that be submitted back to this board with the two weeks that we will have prior to our next meeting for review and appointment.
That sounds good to me.
Before we run on that too, I think it'd be good to have a, like a, when I say landscape contractor, I mean, in the terms of someone who does clearing and grading, because they're the ones who are installing the stormwater features and they have a good understanding of how the equipment and the features work. Engineers can design it, but then the guys on the ground with the boots in the sand are the ones that put it in, and they know how it works, and many times I've heard them have to fix some of the engineer's designs. So I think it'd be good to have a grading contractor in there. If there's one that lives in Emerald Isle, that's great, but if not, I'd like to be able to expand that applicant pool to at least, if we do have a grading contractor that would be interested in applying to be on that committee, so that way they could apply if they could.
I don't amend my, I don't amend my motion.
So I would, yeah, I would just say, I agree with you, Roy. I think the committee could use those folks, but I like the way Alicia put it. We gotta get something done relatively quickly, and we could certainly bring in such a contractor. I think that's a great idea.
And I would highly support bringing in that, but not as a committee member.
Such a contractor could apply. Is that what we said?
Yep, certainly could.
All right, do we need, is Commissioner Sanderson's motion sufficient?
Could they provision also, Commissioner, that one member be from the eastern, one part of the central, and
That is correct.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. The motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried.
Just one point of clarification.
Sure.
So three positions are open, eastern, western, central. May 28th must be a taxpayer in EI. So your appointment and/or classification of a contractor would have to be potentially one of those three, not expanding it to six persons, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Just to make sure everybody's on the same page.
Yes.
And then we could always consult.
Yeah, and that was my point.
You could always consult with a contractor
Very beneficial.
Not being a board member.
Yeah, but not a committee member.
A committee member.
I have two questions.
So you could consult with a contractor. Yep.
I have two questions. One, do we need a motion to appoint Commissioner Brownlow to that committee now, or not?
Do we need a motion at some point, depending on the board's pleasure now or later?
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Brownlow.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's carried. My last question, at the last meeting, it was discussed, whether you go this direction or not, it was discussed, a time period for this committee to be established and a time period for this committee to be dissolved. Is that still the wishes of any board members, or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Not longer than 12 months.
Yes.
I don't think that changed.
Okay. I didn't know if it was carved in stone at the last meeting or not. Was it? I can't remember. It was? Okay. Okay, just, just making sure. All right, good enough. All right. Do we have any other business on? Item 13 with Stormwater Committee, are we done? Yes.
Has the board appointed a planning board representative?
Oh, I just heard that Ethan Parker was unanimously recommended by the planning board.
But we have appointed him. I make a motion to appoint Ethan Parker to the Stormwater Committee.
Okay. Commissioner Sanderson has that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. That handled the Stormwater Committee business for tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, sir. All right, item 14, our esteemed manager, Matt Zap, will talk to us about the Beach Music Festival.
Yes, sir. If you're okay, I do have paper and supporting docs here. If you want me to go to the podium, I'd be glad to.
Whatever. You're good with whatever.
So unfortunately, this isn't good news, so I'm sharing that while assembling the fiscal year 2425 budget, that the town staff, in cooperation with the Business Association, the Tourism Development Authority, looked at every creative way that we could to host and fund the Beach Music Festival, which is slated for September 2024. The overall cost for this event out of pocket to the taxpayers of Emerald Isle is right at $45,000. Last year, we unfortunately had to cancel it due to the uptick of the tropical storm, so these are all based off of real figures from the 2022 event as well as the slated 2023 event. We generated $1,000 last year in sponsorship and advertising support, and we received slightly, right around, a $10,000 commitment from TDA, which we may be able to get again this year. But in general, this is a $45,000 event that is not included in your draft budget. As we discussed it, we were trying to find a way to offset so that the taxpayers of EI didn't have to pay for another promotional event. So unfortunately, here's where we stand. We want to make sure that the board has a chance to answer, ask any questions. We, as a staff, will answer anything that we can, but the 2024 Beach Music Festival is not in your draft budget that you're gonna see here shortly later this evening, and we wanted to take this chance to let the residents know why and to also explain that we didn't have an additional $45,000 in local tax funds to produce that event.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other board members have any questions for town staff regarding the Beach Music Festival?
I'll go. I think it'd be great if there were any local businesses or maybe even the Business Association wanted to step in. I think we would be as cooperative as we could be, but the money's just not there this year for the town to fund it. I think it's a great event, but it's not, unfortunately, not a high enough priority when you look at everything else that needs to get paid for.
Thanks, sir.
I agree.
All right, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the money that we'll be saving for the taxpayers is overwhelming, and it doesn't bring any money in to the, back to the taxpayers. It brings it into local businesses. I highly recommend that the Business Association and local business maybe get together and try to see if they can support it, and if they can, I would be more than willing to have the town step up as this one commissioner, and I'm sure the rest would too, to support the program, but I agree that that's, that's a lot of tax money to go out for nothing to come in when there's so many other things that we need to take care of in the town. So I think that's a wise decision, that's not on this year's budget.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, again, if, if there's any other creative concepts that either the, the residents have, the Business Association partners, we know that the event is extremely renowned and well-sought after, and we have everything slated for the 21st, if I'm not mistaken, of September, but we would need to make a decision if we can rally the troops and the funding to hold it. Otherwise, we would want to release our bands who are currently committed, as they do a great job for us year over year, and so we would want to necessary, we would want to take necessary steps to do it swiftly, but we wanted to have a chance to have this interaction. We appreciate the board's perspective, and if there's anything that we missed, we'll gladly revisit it at this point, but we appreciate the feedback.
Thank you, sir. All right, if there's nothing else to add or no other questions, I assume we need a motion to either try to move forward or to put it to back, correct? All right, I'll wait for the board direction.
Make a motion that we forego the Beach Music Festival this year and with the announcement that we would support any other organization that wanted to fund the event.
All right, motion's on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. Thank you. Item 15, Commissioner Mark Taylor back up for fishing tournament sta, excuse me, Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament status. Yours again, sir.
All right, sounds great. So first off, what I'm gonna request, I'd like to excuse myself from the vote itself being the director of the tournament, but then I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the tournament itself. The fishing tournament is, when we first started it, Richard Stanley, who was our first attorney that was part of it, it, he said when we ever hit a certain amount of funding that comes in and comes out, it would be better that the tournament became like a nonprofit on its own kind of steps. There's a lot of tax advantages for people that are also with the tournament that come in and they can claim it on their taxes and get a return and stuff. Nothing else would change with the tournament. The only request I'm asking is that I can apply for a nonprofit that would be outside of the town as far as the town's, the town being, the town's not nonprofit, it's a government organization. That'll cause the tournament to continue on. It'll still be the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament. It's just the tax benefits of the tournament itself. The volunteers will stay the same, everything will stay the same. It's just mainly a tax move. But as the tournament director, I don't want to vote on this myself. I want to excuse myself on the vote. I'd like to ask these commissioners, the mayor, to consider it, and then it'll benefit the tournament in the long run, and it'll benefit the people that support it, the businesses and stuff. So for now, I'll excuse myself. I'll step away from the table. Y'all talk about it, let me know.
I'm all for it. My, my only question, is the tournament gonna pay whatever legal expenses to set this up? Yes, sir. Okay, perfect. I'm all for it.
I make a motion to make the Emerald Isle
I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Taylor from this action item.
All right, motion's on the floor.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried.
And I make a motion to make the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament nonprofit.
All right, that motion's on the floor by Commissioner Sawyer, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion is carried.
I make a motion authorizing the finance director to prepare a budget amendment to release any remaining fund balance to the tournament upon formal notification from the tournament once it is established.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson with that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. Thank you.
I make a motion to bring Commissioner Taylor back into the meeting.
I make the motion to lead him over there. All right, come on over, Mark.
All right, I'd like to thank my commissioners and mayor up here. I appreciate you very much, and like we said, we'll, we'll knock it out of the park again next year, and we'll work really hard to make it, make it better every year, and it's still gonna be fun. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, and I know it's back in the corner, sir.
All right.
All right, item number 16, Mr. Zap, you're back up with a clarification on plantings regarding our beautification project along Highway 58.
Yes, sir, thank you. I hope this one's a relatively simple request, but the board had directed staff to utilize $6,000 and place it in the fiscal year 2425 budget in relation to beautification along NC 58, and I want to report that that inclusion is in the budget. We would like to have clarification and/or to redirect us to encourage the town staff to work with, what's a best way to define you? You are a master gardener?
I'm a master gardener.
Yes.
And I'm with the North Carolina
We have phenomenal resources within our ranks. We would like to utilize those local resources to help us make decisions and purchase what we would consider to be native and beautification-style plants along NC 58, but we didn't want to deviate from that without your authority.
Make a motion to allocate the $6,000 dedicated to beautification along Highway 58 to install native plants. And thank you, Carol.
Yes, whatever Carol wants is what we should plan, up to $6,000.
Okay. All right, that motion is on the floor by Commissioner Sanderson.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
Ms. Carol, just want to make a quick thing too, as far as plants are concerned, and I'm all for the native plants, and I think it's a great thing. In fact, I was behind the scenes trying to push this for many years down the road. If there's any chance that the, the amount of native plants that you need to get, we can't reach that point, or there's some kind of issue with getting them and stuff, I'd still like to have the opportunity, native plants is first, but if it doesn't happen, then we can continue on with our staff deals, yes. Just to, just to let you know, I just want to ask you what you think. Will we be able to get that? Oh, please.
Would you use the mic, Carol? Is that way? I hate to put you on the spot. Thank you so much.
It's got a little button on the bottom.
Testing, okay. First of all, thank you so very much for reading all my emails and listening to comments, and I really appreciate your openness in learning about native plants and your interest in using them for beautification. The reason, to answer your question, Mark, I think we won't have a problem if we, if we act pretty quickly. We need to determine the square footage of the area we're gonna be looking at and what plants we need, and then we'll probably need to talk with a nursery. So it all depends. If you want to word it, you know, as, as that is the potential backup, I'm fine with that, but if we act quickly, I don't think we should have a problem with accessing the native plants for a fall planting.
Cool. That's perfect. That's, that's, that's awesome.
All right, I had a motion on the floor from Commissioner Sanderson. Do you care to amend that at all regarding the backup plan? Just asking, it's up to you.
I would amend it to that, but whatever Carol's word is, I trust that.
Yep.
All right, so correct me if I'm wrong, the board of, the Board of Commissioners direct staff, the motion is that the BOC directs staff to utilize $6,000 dedicated in fiscal year 2425 to purchase and install native plants along 58.
Correct.
Commissioner Sanderson has that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol, thanks.
All right, Mr. Zap, you're back up for number 17, generator contract.
Yes, sir, thank you. On April 18th, at 12 o'clock noon, a bid opening took place here at the Town of Emerald Isle Boardroom. We had three bidders apply for the opportunity to provide FEMA 428, which is grant-funded propane-powered generators and associated equipment that will help us have a secondary power source to all of our stormwater pumps currently located on the west end of the island. Three bidders, companies completed that. The highest bid was $469,000. The second highest bid was $457,000, and the lowest and best bid is the Palmetto Procurement Company LLC at $398,000. All bid docs have been reviewed and verified, and we would request that the lowest and best bidder, who appears to be Palmetto Procurement Company LLC, be awarded the contract, and then we would sign and execute tomorrow and begin those provisions and ordering and trying to get those generators installed as soon as possible.
Thanks, sir. Any questions for town staff regarding this item or any discussion? Or a motion will be just fine, too.
I have a question. Have they given us the schedule when they can get this done?
We're, yeah, so we're working through this. The lead time on some of these generators is as high as 46 weeks. A majority of the generators that Palmetto has specced are in stock and available. There are some that will have a lead time for construction, so it is our goal to have this done in the next 12 months or less.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize town manager to get a contract with Palmetto Procurement for $398,000 to secure and install propane-powered generators at select Emerald Isle pump stations.
Commissioner Sawyer has the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you.
All right, item 18, Commissioner Brownlow's gonna give us an update on the boat channel navigation relocation.
Thank you, Mayor. It's, I'd say we finally got some, some progress moving on that. Most of it's been bogged down on me, and I've been the cog that's holding it down right now, but just been really busy. But this fall, or earlier last fall, I took Commissioner, I mean, Senator Sanderson and Representative Celeste Cairns out in a boat and took them through the established channel that's being used right now, navigation route with all 20-plus of its turns and curves and 90-degree angles in it, and then, then took them to the curves and ninety-degree angles in it, and then, then took them to the, to the direct route north that we'd like to get funding for and support for on that and they said that, to them, it was a no-brainer, that obviously it's, it's more efficient, it's safer, it's environmentally friendly, so it's just a, it's a win-win situation all the way around except for the obstacles of the, of the rules. So there are environmental rules in place that's, that we've hit and we're not out of the woods by any means of this, but we, we do have strong support from our legislators and they, and they asked that, we send them a letter requesting, officially requesting their support. So that's where we're at right now and so we're sending out letters to Congressman Murphy, Senator Norm Sanderson, and Representative Celeste Cairns, if the board wishes to approve that so we can get it moving forward again.
Make a motion to send letters of support for the boat channel relocation.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanderson, with that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you very much. Mr. Zap, fun time, fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, excuse me, twenty-four, twenty-five, recommended budget presentation.
Go ahead and get our, our team and IT to go ahead and load the presentation, we'll get started here. So for anyone in the audience with us, we wanted to go ahead and make sure you had access to this information, there are printed copies in the rear of the room on the table, if anyone in the audience needs one, we want to make sure that you have one, but these are the days in a manager, finance officer, and fiscal officers world that you like. We are here to deliver good news this evening to our residents and friends and visitors and the elected officials of the Town of Emerald Isle once more. So it is my job to share these beautiful images and all the good numbers, but I want to first begin with a compliment that is not only sincere and heartfelt, but we want to recognize that our GFOA award notification may have come in already and we will be recognizing Ms. Laura Rochford for ten years of finance excellence from the GFOA award, so that is huge. I can tell, I can tell you that I honestly sleep well knowing that Laura is at the helm watching over what we're doing and we all should be very thankful that we not only have a gifted and committed and dedicated finance officer, but one that has municipal experience, is a CPA, and that also pursues all that she does every single day to keep us in the green and not in the red, so tonight we're going to begin, if there's any really hard questions, as the mayor always says, don't ask him, don't ask me, we'll just ask Laura. So if there's any hard questions, again, we're going to defer to Laura. In all sincerity, we'd like to begin with the presentation this evening of your fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget. Rip the Band-Aid off, hear my, hear, no new taxes? No new taxes. We're very excited to say we're presenting a balanced budget this evening that does not change our tax rate and has allowed us with very creative conservation, resale of surplus, and a massive amount of grant funding to allow us to absorb and move forward with a three-point-eight percent Consumer Price Index change in the southeast, March to March between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So this budget that you have here before you this evening is a culmination of the direction from the Board of Commissioners at their January retreat and through each of our board meetings leading up here to this evening. We will be either maintaining and/or improving upon our high standards that have been established in Emerald Isle as a, a family-friendly beach environment. Again, our tax rate would be presented at sixteen-point-five cent, no change over last year, and again, trying to figure out a way to overcome a market inflation of three-point-eight percent over the last twelve months. There is a minor increase in the solid waste fee and I want to be very clear and upfront about that, we currently pay two hundred ninety-five dollars for the year, we are proposing three hundred dollars for the year or five-dollar annual change or forty-two cents a month so that you can see Larry come to your front yard in a brand-new knuckleboom truck come July. So Mr. Larry and Steven are the two knuckleboom drivers, we currently have two trucks running fifty-two weeks a year, five days a week unless it's a holiday, and they are generating between a hundred and eighty and two hundred and ten loads a day and we want to make sure we maintain that truck and that level of service. So as we discussed last month, our board has determined that that five-dollar investment to yield a brand-new truck in July will be a tremendous service to us and so the increase, the only increase in this budget that we're proposing for a tax rate payer in Emerald Isle is forty-two cents a month or that five dollars per year. The primary budget and capital plan goals, here are the top four that we want to bring to your attention. We're going to continue to enhance and focus on beach safety, that has been a driver for us for the last five years and we're very thankful and we understand that we had a little bit to do with it, but we were blessed in twenty twenty-three that we have a one-hundred percent survivorship rating at the ocean and that is our goal again for twenty twenty-four, is that any person that comes to enjoy or live or use the beaches here in Emerald Isle, that they go home safely at the end of each day and that's our top goal, is to make sure that our ocean rescue team has their twenty USLA certified lifeguards, their ocean rescue equipment, and all their proper training to make sure that we have done everything we can to put a safe environment together for our beachgoers. Number two is the future planning of where Fire Station One and Two can or should be located. We are growing, as that was indicated during public comment, vehicular traffic counts are up and as of December thirty-first, approximately four million one hundred and sixty-three thousand cars went through that interchange at Coast Guard Road and NC fifty-eight, that's a substantial amount of people moving and coming and visiting our location and to prepare for that, we're working through the conversation of where does the new Fire Station Emergency Operations Center go? Do we tear it down and rebuild where current Fire Station One is? So that is in our long-term planning. We want to indicate that we currently have a three million, actually three-point-one million dollar grant to rebuild Fire Station Two, so that is at no cost to us as the taxpayer and we are using that federal grant to rebuild Fire Station Two. The long-term decision over the next sixty months is where are our service levels, how are we continuing to meet fire EMS, ocean rescue, and can we sustain that in the existing building? So that is your second and highest priority listed today. Number three is the execution of stormwater infrastructure, all of this has to play into the changes in weather, the increase of people, the density that we're dealing with and how are we protecting people and property here in Emerald Isle. Number four is a salary increase with town employees consistent with the CPI and what you currently have presented tonight includes a three percent, three-point-zero percent adjustment and we did our very best to try to work through and, and get as close to that three-point-eight percent CPI as necessary and we're working through some other options and changes with the board that I'll answer any questions that you do have. Because we know that we're only as good as our people and those are the folks that usually will respond to you on your worst day, we need to be at our best, so thinking through our team members that are currently rated seventy-four to seventy-five FTEs in this budget and that total town budget comes in just a tick north of fourteen million and that general fund is thirteen-point-two million, and again, want to stress the importance of our sixteen-point-five cent stagnant tax rate. The first fifteen and a half cents of that goes to general service with one cent or one penny equalling just north of three hundred thousand dollars that will go into our beach nourishment fund and that sixteen and a half tenth cent tax rate keeps us at the second or third lowest of all twenty-one North Carolina oceanfront communities, we'll see where everybody shakes out at this next, we're currently number two and we'd like to hold that seat. Question was raised to us during our retreat of who's number one and how do they get there? Currently today, Wrightsville Beach is the lowest tax rate, at just north of nine cent, but they collect nearly six million dollars in parking fees. So Emerald Isle generates around two hundred fifty thousand and Wrightsville's at about six million, so if we want our taxes to go lower, we can adjust those fees, but that's, it's a dramatic difference in their model and mindset, so that's how Wrightsville Beach is doing it, but we wanted to make sure our board had that information of where we are at sixteen and a half cents and all the services we provide. Our total general fund for property tax is going to be rated around five-point-three million, want to let you know that evaluation should be coming as early as next year, which may adjust this, but right now, what we're proposing is if an average home in Emerald Isle, according to our statistical data today, is just shy of four hundred and six thousand and that will generate a tax bill for that property of approximately six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and when you add in that solid waste fee, the average homeowner, property owner, and EI would pay less than a thousand dollars for all the services, which include daily yard debris collection, white good collection once a month, two-time-a-week trash collection once a week, recycling, police, fire, EMS, ocean rescue, and all the appearances that come with it, which to us, in comparison, is one of the top four values in the entire state of North Carolina and we're very thankful for that, we're thankful for every visitor that comes that helped keep our taxes that low, but we know that we live in quite possibly one of the nicest, if not the nicest, community in the state and we're very thankful to provide those services at a very affordable rate. One thing that's important to us are all those visitors and our sales tax revenues are projected at near three million dollars this year and that helps the Town of Emerald Isle budget tremendous and so we're looking forward to the arrival of our friends as we know we're getting into our peak season. Our next slide shows the importance of why people are usually coming here and so we know that the beach is one of our, if not the largest, draws and our beach nourishment fund is extremely important to not only today, but the preservation of your property tomorrow in the event of a storm or a natural, natural event that's named. So no change in the beach nourishment special district, so we still propose a four cent for those on oceanfront with a one cent overall and that total dollar amount, just shy of a million dollars, at approximately nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars would be collected and then dedicated into our beach nourishment fund. I'll pause there, any questions about beach nourishment for the board or everything is status quo, we're continuing to save and put those dollars away and we would work in partnership with our federal government as well as the Cardwell County Beach Commission, so thank you to our members of our beach commission that serve on that. In a perspective, this slide's probably going to get really dated, I mean, the cost of a cup of coffee has gotten so high that it might be half a cup, but our sixteen and a half cent property tax rate is going to equate to around fifty-six dollars on average per property per month and that's less than your monthly cable bill, if you haven't cut that cable yet, your smartphone bill is usually going to be two to three times that unless you're using Cricket Wireless, apparently they have a smoking deal there, your daily cup of coffee, as we indicated, is the joke, but it's really the equivalent of, of one night out for two, maybe a movie for a family of four, if you hit the matinee and don't go to the evening show, or if you're using your points or cards to get your tack, your gas turned down a little bit, you, you might get three-quarters of a tank now, maybe a half depending on what you're driving, but the real reality here is, thank you to the board, thank you to Laura, thank you to our staff for putting together a budget that in my opinion is the leanest we've presented in the last five years. This budget is tight, there's not a lot of movement here, the board has been very, very involved in any minor adjustments where we could save a penny to make a nickel, to make a dollar, we've done that and at this point, I'll slow down, I have detail behind here and more importantly, Laura's here, are there any specific questions that the board has as we're presenting to you tonight, your first blush at the draft budget and any questions that we can answer for you?
Thank you, Matt.
Anybody can go first?
Um, I'm, I think it's, uh, we kind of like came together on a lot of things, had to make some tough calls, but all in all, for, like the Beach Music Festival, for example, that's just part of it, you know, you got to balance this thing and make it work, what's better for all the people and, you know, it's, sometimes it's hard to do it, but it's a great time to do it. Just a, just a little bit, one of the things that, that I noticed with the budget and the COLA, I just, I know we're at three percent for our staff and how important our staff is to us, Matt, and the, how they do a great drive on us. Me personally, I, I'd like to see that at least be at three-point-eight, but I know we're at three right now and I know last year we went up to six to try to play a catch-up from everybody else. My past history being the senior guy now on the board, that's hard to believe that, but it's, it's important to try to stay in line with the other towns that are close to us, especially the quality of staff and stuff we got and I think that just shows the staff that we're in support of them at, at least at the COLA level, so that's my two cents, but, you know, and then we look into the cost of employees wanting to leave or go to other places and that's quite an expense also, so it's something to think about as we're finishing this last few steps of the budget, uh, thank you.
If I can speak to that real briefly, the chiefs are here, so if I'm misspeaking, please let me know, but with twenty sworn officers, if I'm not mistaken, Chief Panzarella, you're now at a hundred percent, you filled that vacancy. I would like to, to recognize Mike for that, first and foremost, with his help and Sarah, the, the industry standard rate now in North Carolina is fluctuating between twenty and twenty-five percent vacancy in almost any police department and again, our number is at a hundred percent or two percent vacancy. That's going to come from a culture, an adequate salary, good equipment, and our location, so we have a lot of those factors here to help us out. That's the same in the fire department, if I'm not mistaken, we're at full hundred percent in fire as well. The one thing that we're seeing is an adjustment in the, the challenge lies in some entry-level positions, so in this budget, we are looking at some minor adjustments for the public works team who, if you're looking at comparisons, we're starting at thirty-three thousand dollars a year, so it's a little bit hard to be full-time here at that salary range, so we do have a couple percent adjusted in there to keep our staff at, at full one-hundred percent. Where we are today, I think that we are now with the replacement of Sarah, we don't have any full-time vacancies as of tonight, do we? We're very fortunate and that comes from your desk of support, sometimes the difference of this conversation in that eight tenths of a percent is really important and so thank you, we'll work hard to try to figure out if we can accompany that or do anything more with it, but we wanted to address all those issues for you tonight.
Thank you, Matt. Thanks for your comment, Mark.
I, I would say, and this is very comprehensive budget, so thank you very much for pulling it together. It's data-rich, so obviously I have a bunch of questions, so I definitely would like to schedule a budget workshop, but I know we have the twenty-first set aside as a date, I don't know how long that's going to be, but I would love to have a budget workshop and have each of the department heads that are identified in here come in and talk about their budget, about what they need for FY twenty-five, as well as looking a little bit further downrange so that we can get a little bit better strategic context around where we think these different departments are going, to help inform further decisions and to look through here and see if we, if there are any other trade-offs that might be made within this voluminous amount of data, which again, I, I kudos for pulling it together, but it might be something where, there might even be more that could get plowed back into the general fund, depending on how we look at it, but I would like to have a pretty fulsome and detailed conversation with the folks that own these budgets to be able to inform those decisions prior to when we're asked to approve it.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, yesterday I had a good talk with, with Matt and Laura on this and, and I'll tell you what, Laura is, is, she is the, the budget goddess there and she was there to answer, her and Matt were able to answer a lot of my questions and it might not have been to my satisfaction, but, but they, they, they had answers and it helped me understand things a whole lot better and, and where the money comes from and where it goes and how it's being spent. Probably the most glaring thing that, that jumped out at me was, was the percent of increase in the legal fees and at one point it was at two hundred and ninety percent over what it was budgeted for and then the increase for the fiscal year coming up twenty-four, twenty-five is at two hundred and twelve percent and that was just, I was scratching my head on that one because that was the most significant one and so I hope we can address that and, and speaking to kind of looking ahead, you know, we don't have a crystal ball, but, but just knowing the uncertainty of, of the economic times coming with the presidential election and, and everything else, that, you know, we were talking that some of these grants might not be available coming up in the, in the near future and, and so we're going to have to find creative and innovative ways, other sources of revenue and, and I was talking with Matt about that and, and Laura and, and Dee, there's probably ways we can do that. It's going to be thinking outside the box and it's going to be, we really didn't address too many, having to make too many cuts or anything, it was more just like where else can we find sources of revenue, other, other sources of revenue and, and so I think that's something we're going to be working on in the near future, I hope we do, because the tourists help keep our, our taxes low, yes, but they also put a lot of wear and tear on our infrastructure that our citizens have to pay for and so I was thinking, there'll be a way we can get some of that money back from them to help pay for that within the parameters of the general statutes that we, we can get from them. So we were just kind of kicking around some ideas yesterday and, and that's something I hope we can work on in, in the budget in the near future, so that was beneficial to, to discuss that and I'm be putting out some more white papers on that here in the near future too, about some of the- on that here in the near future, too, about some of these, um, proposed revenue sources. It's, it's what I call a tourism management plan, and it's not anything new or anything unique, it's something that other towns, resort towns, are incorporating. And again, it's just some of that smart growth and ways of thinking, being innovative thinking with limited resources. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And good work to the staff, too, for putting that budget together with no, with no new taxes, no tax increase, that is amazing, that's really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, being we're talking about budget and spending money, I've noticed a trend in emails, um, about trashcans on the beach. That was voted on by the last board, and it hasn't been voted on by this board. And I know it was said to the public to email Matt if you want a trashcan at the end of your Beachway, or whatever it is. Matt does not have that authority to put those trashcans out there, that's something that needs to go through the board. And I just heard $33,000 per year is the start, starting pay for public works. If we throw every trashcan back on the beach, that right there, $66,000 that is not in this budget. So going forward, I think that conversation needs to happen up here and not be thrown at Matt. I don't think Matt should be authorizing those trashcans on the beach, that needs to be something we need to vote on. So from this point forward, I think the public needs to know, if you want your trashcan back on the beach, you need to be emailing us and not emailing him, because technically, he does not have the authority to approve those trashcans.
Just so I'm clear, Commissioner Sawyer, we are instructing the town manager to cease and desist with putting trashcans back on the beach at request, because that's something that's going to take board action.
That, well, it's something that requires board action.
Yes, okay.
Do we need a, councilor, do we need a motion to make that official, or?
No, sir, you could just instruct the town manager.
No.
So instructed.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we schedule a budget workshop for May 21st, beginning at 8:30 a.m.
May 21st at 8:30? Um, let's give it a second here for everybody to check their calendars, please.
What day is that? It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
What location?
Uh, Richard Stanley Conference Room.
Or here, whichever your preference is, we have the media here, it's probably most comfortable here, if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping to go to Raleigh that day.
How's the 22nd?
I'm, I'm good, I'm good the 20th and 21st, but the 22nd, it will not work for me.
The 20th.
20th is a Monday.
I can do the 20th.
You want the 20th?
I can do the 20th.
I can do the 20th.
Commissioner Brownlow?
What say you?
What time?
8:30.
8:30. Do we, listen, can we have a backup date in case I can't make that one?
I think we have to advertise this.
Yeah, we would have to, so, um, while you're looking at that, I'm definitely not trying to talk you out of anything. The conversation about staff, staff has presented what their needs were in January, we would gladly go over any of those details, again, that the board would like. When we met with staff, Laura and I, and, and when we, as a team, meet, we, we do that monthly at our staff meeting as well, so we can answer that. We asked the staff specifically last Tuesday, which would have been seven days ago, do you have what you need in this budget to be successful? And the overwhelming answer is yes. We are very thankful for the interaction we've had from January to today. If you have any other specific questions, I think we can answer them. If you want to schedule another meeting, that's perfectly fine, and we'll adapt anytime the week of the 20th through the 24th is open, but we would need to advertise that.
Yeah, I would love the opportunity to ask the department heads questions about their budget.
All right, so, um, we're back to trying to make Monday the 20th at 8:30? Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm at, that's a question.
Is, is the, is Friday morning working good for everybody, or not, the 24th?
I can't do Friday.
I can't do it. Yeah, it's just going to be hard for me to be out two days straight. Um, it is, I guess.
The length of this meeting proposed, is there a time, or no?
Uh, to sufficiently satisfy questions, I have not, I'm not familiar with the time limit being placed on these.
I only ask is, is if it would potentially help Commissioner Brownlow's.
Understood.
We'll just, we'll put it down.
All right, there's a motion on the floor? For budget workshop meeting, Monday, May 20th at 8:30 a.m. in the boardroom?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's carried, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So right now, so 5:20, 24, 8:30 a.m. in this room?
Yes, sir.
So we've had one request for department heads, would you like all department heads present at that meeting? We would need clarification of what your expectations are, and we'll be glad to prepare for that.
It would be helpful, recycle them through, or, you know, I'll try to be as least disruption as possible to their workday, but I think this is important.
Would, would an allocation of 15 minutes, 30 minutes suffice?
Half hour, yeah, I think.
So if we could, if you don't mind, even if you just sent an email with the questions that you do have, so they'll be prepared to speak to them well in advance, that gives them time, we would love to answer your questions thoroughly. It might be a little bit hard for them to pull data while they're standing there as opposed to in advance. So if you send some questions over, and we would love to have you do that, if you can send those in the next seven days, that helps give them a week's prep time amongst their other workload, that would be really helpful.
Send them directly to you.
You know, we're tomorrow, the next day, if you can send it over, so we're getting dangerously close, so. Today being the 14th, right, we're, we're six days out already, so if you can give us your questions, if you have any, because we've, we've funneled through quite a few meetings individually with commissioners, but if you just email us the list, that'd be great.
So you're going to need them sooner than seven days?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're inside the window, so we normally give everybody time, but that's why I'm asking if you could just email me your list.
All right.
Okay. Then the next request, I think Lee was asking is, we would like to have your formal concurrence to advertise for the June 11th budget hearing in this space at the next available town board meeting.
Motion made to schedule a public hearing for the '24-'25 budget on June 11th in this space.
Motion's on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you. Anything else, sir?
Just for the public's record, workshops are open to the public. That is considered a formal meeting.
Absolutely, and so we would encourage you to, to join us here, and Monday, the 20th, at 8:30 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, your entire staff, all department, everybody, for putting all that together, um, being accommodating on another meeting as well, that's, we appreciate you all very much. Uh, item number 20, my favorite part, comments from the town clerk.
I guess, um, I think it looks like I have at least one more meeting with y'all, but just thank you all so much, it's been an honor to be your clerk, and, um, this is such a great team to work with, so leaving is, um, is a new opportunity, but always something that's great for me.
Our pleasure, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, councilor?
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Zapp?
Thank you. I want to let the public know that beginning effective tomorrow, Thursday and Friday, should be some light construction on Lee Avenue, as TD Ure will be installing guardrails at the Lee Avenue culvert at Archers Creek. The traffic should be maintained to one lane at a time, but if they do have a temporary closure, it wouldn't be long, so we have advertised that, as such, want to let you know that tonight. Secondarily, wanted to let you know that the Tennis Court resurfacing project has been delayed due to weather, obviously, it's raining today, we were supposed to start this week. The vendor needs a clear slate of weather for up to 12 to 14 minimum days, so we've made that announcement, pushed it to social media and on our front page of our website. We also wanted to let you know that the Blue Heron Park septic field has failed, and we've had to issue a man, an emergency $6,000 purchase order to repair that, so we will be, we're working on the restrooms, but unfortunately, the septic field has failed, so we're going to be working with Bog Sound to get that rolling, so Ricky Taylor will hopefully be helping us with that. Construction's also underway inside the community center at the bathrooms, we're working through one set of stalls at a time, so male and/or female will be under construction one at a time, but not both. We wanted to be polite, so the ladies get to use the indoor, the men get to go outdoor, so we have placed temporary units there, so gentlemen, we appreciate your assistance to allowing the women and children to use the indoor bathrooms while we're under construction. There's a series of other things, also, the new ramp, the 24-foot by 3-foot ramp has been installed as of today at E.I. Woods. The kayak launch is set to be ordered and would be installed hopefully in the next six to eight weeks, but you can currently use the existing ramp and launch your kayak. Also, want to remind people that if you have a kayak that you forgot about, someone else forgot about, someone gave you a kayak and you put it at E.I. Woods, and you didn't remember that you did it, we are cleaning up E.I. Woods, there is a definitive push, so, uh, our kayak has now become your kayak, your kayak is our kayak, so if you have one there, please come and get it, and then we're looking at a process to tag those to make sure we know who's inventoried, but there is a substantial amount of abandoned kayaks at the, at the end of the path at E.I. Woods. So that's, those are your general updates. Sent out a very lengthy managers' meeting on Fri-
Will they end up on GoDills, or?
Yeah, potentially, so we would love for you to come get your kayak, and then we'll figure out how to re-rack them, but I tried to send out a really comprehensive note on Friday, I think it was 37, 35 or 37 Megs, so if you normally get my Friday manager report, and you didn't get it Friday, it's because your inbox couldn't take it. So I tried to delete some items and resend it, and I still had about 50 to 60 bounce-backs. So if you haven't seen any of these great updates, they're on Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, TikTok, the front page of the website, the Coffee Press Newsletter, the first of the month newsletter that comes out in Emerald Tidings, that'll be in the 15th of the month for the EIPD, and most importantly, Pancakes Saturday. Right, Tom? Pancakes Saturday. So please come support Neighborhood Watch and be here this Saturday, and we're, we're sure that the illustrious chief of police will be making custom pancakes that look just like you, mayor, and we will sell those. They are going to go like hotcakes, Jason. I'm trying to be as punny as possible.
Punny, punny guy.
Take care, thank you.
Hey, uh, quick, just for, for those at home that might not know, you said Saturday, just remind everybody the time and location.
If I had my newsletter in front of me, this, this facility, right, will be, what's our schematic on the pancakes?
It's, uh, finish facility on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00.
Saturday here, 9:00 to 11:00, eat in, carry out, feel free to buy one for your neighbor. The only thing better than buying one set of flapjacks is buying two and giving them to somebody, right? That's what chief said.
Better than both of those, having you cut them for me.
That's, I'm going to cut them up and put your syrup on, it's a full-service deal. So let's support Neighborhood Watch and come on out on Saturday for pancakes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, comments from commissioners, shake it up and go down to Commissioner Sanderson first.
I'd like to thank staff for their diligent work on the budget and providing us that balanced budget. I sincerely appreciate the board being willing to look at, at least coming up with that minimum CPI increase. I think that's important, because the staff is the backbone of our organization, and I believe that we can accommodate a minimum of that without any additional tax burden on the taxpayer by making some small adjustments. Speaking of staff, I'd like to applaud Captain Dean Odom, who's with our fire and EMS. Captain Odom has recently completed his associate degree and continues to strive to make himself a better person, a better employee for all of us every time. Thank you so much for those who reached out.
Thank you, ma'am.
Recently.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, thanks, Alicia.
Great job, staff, as always, we're going to miss you, staff. Even though you don't say a lot, we're still going to miss you, and, uh, just good job on the budget, guys.
Um, yeah, I'd like to, again, give accolades to the staff, Sarah, for taking me in as the new commissioner and helped me through the transition. I always think she's like, I, I lost my name tag the minute, like, five minutes after she gave me, so now she got me three more. So she's learning me real quick, and about that time, she's, she's leaving, but, uh, but Jean, you got your hands full. Also, I saw in the proclamations, too, it's, um, voting week, so talking about the channel, that was pretty neat, neat right there, but, um, it's National Police Week, and everything on the news, the stuff going on, you know, the tragedy with those four police officers. Again, I think our police officers get the, the Hero Award, Unsung Hero Awards for what they do for us. I don't think a lot of people realize, just every day, they're putting their, their life on the line, whether they know it or not, we don't know it, they don't know it, and just, I can't thank them enough for that. It's also National Public Works Week, and, you know, talking about that new knuckleboom truck and everything, so again, I'd like to thank, uh, our public works staff, I got, had an opportunity to work with Joe Smith yesterday, too, and, um, man, it's just really cool just seeing the work that they do, uh, there's so much work going on behind the scenes that we don't know about, and to see that firsthand, I'm very impressed with the quality of service that they're able to provide with, what they have to work with, and just, kudos to, to our staff also. And National EMS Week, and thank you for keeping our citizens, our tourists, healthy, alive, trips to, safe trips to the hospital, and responding, and just, man, it seems like every weekend, I hear sirens going on, what's, you know, just so much going on, and it's, it's only going to escalate with the, uh, population and just I-42 coming, so, uh, I can't, again, I can't say enough about our emergency medical, um, our emergency personnel, all of our staff, it's just incredible, so, just to have one short week to say thank you is not enough, but, but thank you to all those. Also, I'd like to say that, um, there's an issue with, with a food truck that recently came up, and I got a lot of emails, phone messages on that, and, um, and I'd like to, could I make a, or ask for a motion for the board to recommend that the planning board look back at the food truck ordinance? Again, is that something we can do, or?
Absolutely.
So, can I make the motion, or does it have to be someone else, or?
No, you can make the motion, just make it specific to what you want the planning board to address.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion that the, or make a motion that the board commissioners ask the planning board to review the food truck ordinance again, and maybe establish some standards for, uh, competing with light services or merchandise directly across from a, a bricks and mortar store. So that's the motion, and the reason for that, because we did have an incident where, you know, the bricks and mortar stores are the ones that are, they're paying property taxes, they're, they're paying business fees, uh, they're, they're definitely giving money back to the town, and the other folks, they, they roll in, make their money, and, and roll out. And so, um, I, I would just like to just have that, a way to eliminate competing stuff.
Okay, the motion is to?
I'd like to try to make an amendment to that motion, just try to, try to shorten it up for the planning board, the distance of competition. The, the main concern right now is you've, you've got food trucks coming in, competing with someone right across the street, so I think distance is going to be a big thing. I think we all got the email as far as Oak Island and how they set a distance to make it a little fair. I know that property, if that food truck was on the other side of the property where Captain's Kitchen was, I don't think it would be as big of a deal, so maybe make an amendment in there to just look at the distance instead of the whole food truck ruling, because that's a lot to go through, um, just kind of give them a little bit more guidance on what they're looking at.
Yeah, the Town of Oak Island, uh, has an ordinance that says that you can't have another food truck selling light merchandise or services within 500 feet of the bricks and mortar store. And if we could do something like that, I think that, that would help, help resolve it.
50 feet, yeah. Just maybe look at the distance, just make a motion to have the planning board look at the distance of competition, food trucks from adjacent businesses.
The motion is amended.
All right, motion is on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you very much, board. Thanks.
Commissioner Wood?
All right, thanks for remembering that food truck thing, Roy, I had it written down on a different piece of paper, so thank you. And thank you to staff for pulling together this great budget, it is a lot, and it's, I know it's a lot of balancing act, and you push in here, it pokes out over there, so there's a lot to it, so thank you very much, I appreciate the hard work. So thank you very much, I appreciate the hard work.
Thanks, sir.
The crowd here tonight, thank you, you're the true loyal customers that we get to come in and stuff. It's, we had some large crowds over the last six months or so, but this is an important night with the budget and stuff, so you're the ones here hearing how the budget's playing out, so thanks for, thanks for being here and being a person, and really appreciate that. Laura, amazing, I mean, every year I've set up here, you've just reached the top goal, and then years I haven't been here, you're still hitting it, and I'm sure you're going to hit it many years after that. So she is a true blessing, it's, she is the backbone of all the finances that happen here, and it's really cool. Sarah, going to be missed, I think you're training a great person to fill your shoes over there, but definitely enjoyed working with you, you're an amazing lady also, so hopefully you'll still stop by and see us a bunch. Thanks for the support for the fishing tournament, it's one of my little babies, and I love it so much, and thanks for letting me have the opportunity to do it, thanks for the board. And thanks, Rory, for talking about the food truck, too. I think that's a great way, and Josh, what you were talking about, about the mileage thing, I think that's the perfect fix. It's a simple thing for them to go in there and figure the radius out, I think that's perfect, because we do have to protect our brick and mortar stores. They support us in so many different ways, so that's, that's very important. But there is an opportunity for those business people to come in here, too, with a food truck, and I think it works, we can make it all work. So thank you, thank you very much. That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. All right, thanks to everybody in the room, thanks to everybody at home, thanks for being a part of the most special place in the world. I appreciate you all, and that's all I have to say.